May here in Saint Anne, but may utilize the internet or the phone or faxing or whatever. So basically ensures that businesses that are selling things to Saint Anne within the boundary of Saint Anne pay the same sales taxes as our businesses are required to collect. And so it levels the playing field between the brick and mortar businesses that we have in town and those businesses that aren't located in town that sell things to within the city of Saint Anne. This is becoming a huge issue for brick and mortar businesses to survive because they cannot compete when businesses that are not located here sell things and can charge a cheaper price. So, you know, everybody likes to pay, you know, you save a few cents by not having to pay sales tax on Amazon or whatever, that's fine. But what's going to end up happening is you're going to lose the ability to have local businesses sell things to you. Because they are on such a thin margin, they're going to, you know, eventually they're gonna wither and die away. I mean, Big Lots is a perfect example of of that. They're a national, you know, they were a national chain of discount type stores and they couldn't compete. So, you know, that's just an example of what's gonna happen. So.
Bridgeton does have this. Bridgeton has this marijuana.
First, most cities in Saint Louis County that have retail presence in their town have this tax. There are cities that don't have any kind of stores. They don't really care. But those that have these types of taxes, generally they, they, they have this tax on their local sales taxes. So, Saint Louis County's putting it on the ballot for the county portion of the sales tax rate. We have the ability to put on the ballot for our local sales taxes, which are the capital improvements, park, economic development and the local, one quarter cent local option sales tax. So, you know, if the county's gonna put it on the ballot and they're going to do an educational campaign, they were debating on how many hundreds of thousands of dollars to throw into an educational campaign because it's that important. To, you know, to keep the businesses that we have at level playing field.
So another, another good thing too is that it does not go towards the pool? Or does it?
No, it comes, it, it, our local, our local option sales taxes that we have in place would come to us as they are. The county portion, if it passes, the one percent sales tax, the state law was changed several years ago to make sure that that is distributed the same way as the regular county sales taxes. So, we're in the pool on that. So we could get the benefit, if it does pass, we could get the benefit of being cool on a per capita basis.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this is not gonna happen to anything in Saint Anne, any businesses that are brick and mortar. This is strictly only when you order online, correct? So.
Correct.
Nothing's gonna go up for anybody in, I mean.
Well, if, if, if you buy, if you buy something online.
Talking about brick and mortar.
If you're gonna buy something online, let's just be honest. When you buy something online right now, you pay a local, you, you pay up a use tax. You pay a four point something percent use tax on the state sales tax.
That only goes to the state, not us.
That only goes to the state. The state's had it for decades. And they conveniently, when all this internet sales tax stuff came about, guess who they protected? They protected the state and just waved their magic wand and said it applied to state. But all you municipalities and all you counties, you've gotta go back and try to explain this to your residents to get them to, to vote for it. So, right now, you pay that to the state. If the county passes their portion, you will pay that to the county. And, you know, if you, if we don't pass it here, you won't pay one point two five percent, we'll get a one point two five percent reduction on your Amazon purchase. Uh, no. It's, what is? One, 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 one point seven five percent reduction.
Two cents a dollar.
On your, on your Amazon. But, you know, again, that puts your, your local businesses at a competitive disadvantage. And, you know, it's not fair to the local businesses that they would have to charge the local sales tax. And Amazon gets a break on the sales tax rate.
Well, the disadvantage for the business is basically back when there was no online sales, businesses had to build buildings everywhere because they wanted to get people in their stores and they wouldn't necessarily travel that far. But once online sales came about, people started moving to buying all that stuff online. Well, the businesses don't need all those buildings out there anymore. And right now, today, we have a lot of commercial mortgages that are starting to destroy banks as well as a result of not needing these properties. And that's what we're seeing with Big Lots. We're worried about Walgreens and there's one more, I believe. Certainly when we had the store, the old grandpa pigeons remake. I mean, it's just obvious. People are shopping online and
Well, even like Redman and stuff, who is a big contributor. Now people are able to take back their shoes over online. Something like them are boobs, so on. So that does.
And in, in realism, this tax has been passed by the residents before. Every time they went to a building and shopped. It's just that when online sales became a reality, the state did not think to put taxes on it for anybody but themselves.
So all this does is, you know, just ask the voters if they wanna level the playing field and they choose not to, but that's fine. Then, you know, we can, we can deal with it as far as the, you know, the, the local businesses. I think they're gonna see, you know, local businesses, whether they're the county or the, or Saint Anne or whatever, they're gonna go where they get the best deal. And, you know, and the notion that a retailer doesn't look at what taxes they have to collect and pay is, you know, is not, they, they look very closely at that.
Yeah, it's the example of Menards, you know, who demanded that we cut back on the tax just to bring them here. You know, you're, you're also seeing this in, in the fast food industry, food industry. There are restaurants that are choosing not to have dining rooms anymore, just like, kinda like Q wings. You come pick it up and you go. Because they wanna eliminate that labor and utility and so forth costs to try and make some kind of profit, especially in this high-priced market that's going on. I spend most of my money online, so this is certainly nothing that I like, but I also realize that it's, um, like I said, we've already passed the tax before. We're just not getting, having to pay for it right now.
And then the other thing, the other big portion of this is, is that, you know, businesses that are normally not in the business of collecting sales taxes that are just businesses, that they provide services or they provide, you know, the crossings and, you know, charter. We use them as an example. When they buy new computers for their call center, if, you know, they're not buying them from a, from a, you know, a local store, they're buying them over the internet. And right now, you know, they pay the state. If the county passes the use tax, they'll pay the county. And if we pass our local sales tax rate, they'll pay a local sales tax rate to benefit our parks on those purchases of, of computers, you know, and they get a free one point seven five percent.
Yeah. I had a resident ask me a question today and I called Matt just to make sure I was giving a good answer. And at that point, we used weed marijuana sales. I'll just put this into the conversation now because I was gonna bring it out later that for the entire year of twenty twenty four, our three cent sales tax only brought in a hundred and nine thousand nine hundred dollars. So even though Bridgeton's making two million dollars off of a use tax, we're not likely to see quite as much because we, we're just so much smaller. We don't have as many stores. But every time that, every time Payton would have to buy a filter, every time they'd have to buy a new lamp or any other pieces of equipment.
They buy it on the internet.
They buy it on the internet and that money, because some businesses are really gonna want to pay more than, than us.
It's about, it's about the, the.
But it would not be taxed on the weed.
It's about half of the, of, of the total collections, about half of the are business to business. And that's what the disso- it must have been.
We gonna get any literature on this? Slit out?
I've got a fact sheet and I'm sure the county's gonna put together theirs. The, the principle's the same. It's, it's, it's applicable to whether it's a county use tax or a state use, or a state use tax or a local use tax. So people are gonna get educated on, you know, what, you know, unfortunately, the state didn't change the name of it. So, you know, you've gotta get over the hump that you're not gonna be charged for using anything. This isn't a use tax for using a service or or anything like that. It's a, you know, it's a tax that applies to internet sales and catalog sales and and those type of things. So, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of information coming out. We can put together, you know, a sheet that was based last time this came around. And it was different because it, it wasn't, the state hadn't changed the legislation. So this time around, it's a little bit different as far as, you know, the, what it applies to. It ensures that there's gonna be, you know, the state will collect it. So if your business selling to another business, you're gonna have to pay this or the state's gonna catch you and you know, hold you accountable.
The hard part for me is that I just really never wanted to put a tax to the people while I was mayor. But I also, you know, I see the prices that we're paying for things. And the inability to give raises to employees and, and this will help pay for some of the parks things that we wanna get done. So that's, that's why I let Matt ask you guys if he wanted to put this on the ballot.
Could we get to ask questions or?
Yeah, ask.
Um, how much is the proposed county use tax? Or what is the use tax for county?
It's whatever the county, whatever total county sales tax.
Three point five one, some, 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 counties is something like three point five, one, two, five, seven, five, something like that.
I mean, that's what they're gonna charge on.
That's what county will charge.
That's what charge, the county will apply. It's, it works the same way. So whatever the, it's, it's applicable to whatever the county use ta, county sales tax rate is. And the county's got the, the, you know, they've got the one percent sales tax. They've got a bunch of trans, transit and metro link taxes. They've got the law enforcement sales tax. They've got child services fund sales tax.
Yeah, but that's all.
Yeah, that's all. Those are all the, those are all the taxes the counties has.
But that's gonna be on this, it's gonna be on what I buy for Amazon.
If the, if the county passes the site, if the county passes the use tax, then yes, all those, all those taxes will be collected. Because it, it's just like, it works just like the state sales tax. It's whatever the sales tax rate is.
Like right now, the state, I think, if you, like, if we go to Menards, we're already paying state and a county and a Saint Anne tax. So it'd be most similar to Menards minus the TDDs.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it's not, the TDDs don't have the, the authority, the statute to collect these taxes.
Sorry, what?
So, but that, you know, that money, except for the one percent county sales tax, all that money goes to the county. It doesn't, it doesn't come to Saint Anne. Except for the, the one percent sales tax and the law enforcement sales tax, public safety sales tax. That will be distributed on a countywide, uh, per capita basis. The law was changed at the same time as the one percent. So, the county, you know, the county's gonna have a hard time passing this. I mean, they, you know, but.
We're gonna have a hard time passing.
We're gonna have a, we're gonna, you know, you know, you know, but at least, you know, you got the opportunity to decide if you want it, pass it. If you don't, don't. I mean, you know, but don't be shocked when businesses start to leave because they're that sensitive.
If this does well enough or, or how long will you see the numbers coming in? Is that quarterly? Is it every six months?
As far as the revenue?
Correct.
It's every month.
Okay. So if, if Jenny, you might like to hear this, if this is something that is good and that, you know, it does well enough to where we can actually make some good business decisions, such as, you guys know, constantly trying to network with other municipalities, right? We've already brought in over a half million dollars with Charlotte, other courts for the North County Co-op and stuff, bringing two hundred and sixty thousand. And so as the police chief coming in the last twelve years, bringing almost a million dollars in for revenue for us, one of the things that I would ask is, like, for the courts, I've heard a couple residents already who tried to come up here and try to do some of their business during daytime and they're met with no parking. So little things, my question is, is that if it did well enough, is that something where we could purchase a, a building or something and move courts there? Then I can go to other municipalities and do that. If it also does well enough too, where listen, we're not trying to tax anybody, right? But then let's say something about sixty thousand, the rollback that you were talking about. Like I got zero. So if we're making good business decisions and doing that, where we're still bringing money in, well then let's do that back to the community then. So, you know, I think that's a smart thing to do.
Right. But at the same time, when I ran, I said that I wasn't going to increase taxes. And and even though it's a tax that we've already, they've already approved, and I understand the reasoning behind wanting to put this out to the voters, I personally don't feel comfortable doing that because I told them I wasn't going to.
Three taxes?
Correct. I would, I told them I was going to do everything I could to avoid doing that. And my residents, especially in my ward, they're already strapped really hard as it is. And, you know, I, I know you say, okay, it's like um, one point seven five cents on a dollar. But, you know, if I have a resident who's elderly and can't get out and has to do all their shopping online, that could actually be a decent hit to their budget. And that's why I'm not comfortable with this.
Well, I, I, that's, that's one way of looking at it. But the other way of looking at it is, is to understand that, you know, people like to have local businesses.
Right.
And if they can't compete, then, you know, they're going to leave. And, you know, if the price is okay with that, that's, that has to be part of the, that's, it has to be part of the understanding. It's not just internet sales, it's brick and mortar businesses.
It's the inability to fill empty box stores.
Yeah. I mean, because those stores, if, if.
So we wind up with Salvation Army's and Vincent, Saint Vincent DePaul's.
So if we lose bro, uh, brick and mortar, that's revenue that we're not gonna get either. So I mean, so by losing, by losing that revenue, we're gonna.
And again, your, you know, the other way to look at this is, is that retail sales from stores, you know, the, the local sales taxes revenue in Saint Louis County grows by about two percent a year. Okay. So that's what that's growing. So that's growing two percent. What's inflation? Three? It's been as high as ten?
Correct.
You know, nine percent? It's not even keeping up with, with inflation. But guess what's growing at four, five, six, seven, eight, eight percent? It's online purchases. So you're gonna run into the, the, you know, the other thing that's gonna happen is, is, you know, the park fund is not gonna be able to capture that revenue from online sales. And as brick and mortar stores close, the park fund will decline.
Will decline. And it's already being paid for.
The general fund's a little bit, the, the general fund's a little bit more insulated because we, we collect that money in, or based on a per capita basis. So if a store, if Big Lots closed, is closing, if they finally close, you know, the, 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 the hit for us is going to be there, but we're somewhat insulated because we have the one cent sales tax in the general fund. Now the park fund is gonna suffer. But what the park fund's gonna suffer a lot more, you know, long term, is the inability to collect any kind of growth in sales taxes, whether the use tax or sales taxes, that exceed inflation. And that's just a fact. And, you know, at some point, you're gonna, you're not gonna have money coming in that is going to be equal to what the costs are gonna go up. And there's not gonna be any kind of other revenue coming in from sharing or, or anything like that that's gonna meet it. So.
You know, we're, we're looking at this the wrong way, I think, because you're saying that this is gonna save the brick and mortar, but really that brick and mortar is gonna go either way. So for us to be able to, you know, even it out, we gotta get on board with the.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a two, it's a two-phase hit. You're gonna lose stores because they're gonna go where they're, 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 they're at least on a level playing field with, 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 with retail set, with online retail sales.
Right.
Plus, you're not gonna cap, you're not, you, you, we're not going to capture for our local sales taxes, which are very important, like for the park system. You're not gonna capture the, the growth on online sales as, you know, more and more, you know, when Amazon figures that out, deliver two by fours via drone, we're in trouble.
Well, you're both right. We definitely need to get on, on, into the online sales business because that's where all of our sales taxes are going. And, and there is a possibility that maybe to get some store, attract stores with, if they knew that they had the ability to compete against these online shoppers. But also I want you guys to think, what are the three things that your residents are, have been demanding for the last fourteen years that we've been around? Want a sit-down restaurant. Two places for entertainment. And the ability to buy their clothes and shoes in Saint Anne.
I wanna watch her.
That is right.
Amazon is making it easier and easier to buy online, that's for sure.
Well, at the end of the day, you know.
They sell their groceries.
Talk to the residents about it and if it doesn't, doesn't. If it does, then.
Let the residents decide. I, I mean, that's just, that's up to you guys, of course, but.
Just to give you some idea, I mean, the county, you know, the conversations, because you go online, you can watch the meetings. You know, the county, this is such a huge issue that, you know, the county intends to keep, you know, they had discussed that they're gonna put it on a ballot time after time after time because it's that important. Because it's, it's just, it's not going to go away. And eventually it's, you know, it's gonna cause a huge problem on top of the existing problem they have right now.
I mean, it's really no different than if there were stores for them to go to that they would be buying anyway.
And they would be paying nobody anyway.
So, I mean, I, I get it. I mean, everybody loves that, that, that's your little, you know, perk that you get when you buy online. But I mean.
Well, that perk, I mean, the, the perk is, the perk is to going away is, you know, if they're, and as far as, it's gone from the state perspective, the county's gonna continue to try and get this passed from their level. We don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna have a, a park fund that's gonna be able to provide the money to subsidize the park system. That's an issue we're gonna have to deal with. Because right now, you know, right now, the park fund, you know, it's about sixty percent of the cost of the park system comes from sales taxes to the park fund and general fund transfers into the park fund.
Well, am I, was I reading the numbers from last year right? That we were three percent down in sales taxes anyway?
No. Sales tax, the sales, it was up a little bit in the general fund because they started collecting the one percent sales tax again.
Can we get it on the April ballot or?
That's the idea.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here. Cause the county's putting, the county's putting it on the April ballot.
If the county wasn't doing it, it wouldn't be an, it wouldn't be a discussion.
You got the, you got the benefit of having, you know, there's going to be a lot, you know. And just to give you some idea, the, the entities that spoke in favor of this at the, the county level, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, which is the Saint Louis, which is the, which is the greater Chamber of Congress for Saint Louis, Saint Louis County. Their representatives spoke in favor of it. Realizing that they were, that their members were gonna end up having to pay more at the end of the day, that they feel it's vital from a perspective of finding revenue for services.
Watching TV?
Hey Ivan, turn your TV down a little bit.
So is there any other discussion on this one? We'll be taking a vote later after the first portion of the meeting.
Can the golf course turn a little?
Any other questions?
All I would like to say is that I'm a big online shopper. But the main reason I wanted to be an older woman was to be here for my residents. And that is something that when I walked door to door, they wanted Saint Anne to be a place where they didn't have to go across the bridge. They didn't have to go to another municipality. They wanted to stay in Saint Anne and spend their money in Saint Anne. And that's hard when businesses are going away. And they want to take their families. I mean, people come to Saint Anne for their first home, to raise a family, um, and also their retirement. And so that, they deserve places to go. They deserve to spend their money where they live and where they work hard because there's a lot of people who are now retired and they're here. And so I think that if we're not thinking about how to bring in revenue, you know, that is what I'm always thinking of. What are ways that we can market Saint Anne and bring people in? And so if Big Lots is leaving, you know, if we're not going to do this tax, I mean, I think we should do this tax. And I don't want to do taxes. I mean, I don't want, I, online shop, that's all, that's all I do. But it's one of those things where if we're gonna allow Saint Anne to keep growing and keep attracting people, we're not, people aren't going to Saint Charles. People aren't going to the city to find entertainment and restaurants and all that. We need that in Saint Anne. Or we will have no business here.
Saint Charles County does have this tax.
Correct. And that's why, you know, people go, there's all these new restaurants popping up. And in Bridgeton, there's this new, I think it's called Sliders or something. We need something like that, you know, like that is something, that's a big space. Big Lots is a big space. And I.
But it's not an easy space to supply because it's off the road. Even Big Lots didn't like it.
But I think that if we are, you know, networking and we're really thinking of businesses that can come there, I don't think anything's impossible. And I, and I think that's something that I think everyone doesn't wanna always have to go outside of Saint Anne to go buy food and to go spend their money. And so I, I just think that that is something that I feel very strongly about is for our residents is to have a nice place to spend their weekends and not have to go outside of Saint Anne. So that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to golf course treatment.
So we've got a grant, uh, used to be the old trim grant, uh, that's now the, what is it called?
It's the cooperative select grant with the, with the Department of Conservation.
Conservation grant. So this just allows us to remove the diseased, dead trees at the golf course and replace them with uh, saplings. So we've done this before. So just continuing what we've, we've done trying to get rid of the trees.
We're gonna have another tree event with that too?
Well, we, we had the tree event to get the, you have to have a tree event every year to apply for the grant. Yeah. It was last year.
That was pretty cool. Any other questions on that? Building Energy Efficiency Report.
Yeah, you got the, in there, just got that from the train people. So basically what it shows is, you know, we spent a considerable amount of money. Was it, I guess it was four years ago, three years ago on this building, everything's with the H. this building, everything's with HVAC system, roofing replacements, uh, and, uh, the garage down at the, uh, main garage down at the public, uh, works slash street department building. So that just shows you what they've estimated that, uh, you know, energy efficiency improvements with the roofs and windows and the HVAC, what that actually means on a dollar basis after every year, so, you know, the good news is, is that, that savings is, is gonna keep coming up as utility costs continue to go up, so. Not a lot of money, but it's, it's a nice amount of savings now.
Especially with the money to raise their rates. Everybody here at Ameren, who's gonna raise your bill seventeen dollars and forty-five cents? Nothing financials?
Yep, uh, sent the financial report out. So basically, we ended the year, uh, through the, the end of December, so we ended the year, um, in good shape. Unfortunately, we didn't get our, uh, big reimbursement check from the T D B by the end of the year. There was a person at the law firm who handles that, got taken to the hospital by ambulance, and so she couldn't write the check, um, to us, but at the end of the year, couldn't make the wire transfer, so we got the money now. So, that was the only thing we came in a little bit short on, was the T D B reimbursement, but, uh, end of the year, beginning of this year, it did make a difference, casters back there, so. We did pretty good last year, um, you know, this year, uh, going into this year, the, the. Thing that really affected us last year, and it's gonna affect us this year, is the cost of things we buy. Tried to address that in budget by making, you know, realistic projections on what we spent on ordinary things. So I think we'll actually be able to get a little bit of a shake this year, um, with that, um, with these, the things that we can control.
Okay, any questions? All right. All the men, Jimenez.
Hi, yes, well, actually, Mark and Michael are here to answer any questions, and I don't know if you guys all received the email I sent out. He actually has, um, the map, um, that they wanna do the race, and then, so essentially, they came to me and they want to do a bike race at T Meyer Park. And so, um, they also came to Tim, and so we put it on the, uh, agenda, and I want them to just talk a little bit about it and what they wanna do, and just want you guys to hear what they have to say.
Come right up, gentlemen.
My name's Mike Weiss, thanks for having us here. Uh, so, we can talk a little bit about sort of what we thought about doing and, uh, share if it's something you guys have an appetite for. I have a retail business in St. Louis, so I appreciate the conversation on, uh, sales tax. I do a lot of the programming in the state, um, nationally, regionally, locally, on competitive cycling, and so we always try to, uh, it's not a sport that municipalities promote, it's a sport that the people within cycling promote. So we do have a calendar of events that runs basically March through December, and we're always looking for venues to hold races that we feel have the characteristics we like. And so Mark has been a race promoter for a long time and a longtime competitive cyclist in St. Louis, and so he threw out this idea of, what about T Meyer Park? So I went and drove it, uh, never having been to it, and I thought it was a suitable venue to hold a race. We have three events we put on in the spring, um, already. It's always a bigger incentive to get people to travel to St. Louis or to municipalities within St. Louis if there's an event on Saturday and Sunday. And so, uh, we were looking at having a, just an extra reason to have people come to St. Louis and race. Races have different impacts, and so in terms of like a conversation about, uh, building an event in a community over time, that's always there, like we put on some pretty enormous events, and we also put on some very small local events. As a spring race coming out of winter, the idea was to provide something for, uh, more of a local audience, but that's not to say that over time you could turn it into something that could be very positive for the community.
Are you, cool?
Yeah.
I have questions. Is this all age groups, is it like a race for, like, this age to that age, blah, 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 or is it just everybody races?
That's a great question, so, uh, a cycling competition for this, this style, like in a short park, is a little bit like Indy racing, where they race for a amount of time, and do a number of laps within that time, and we do, the schedule of events is a little bit like a fight card. So, uh, it's an insured permanent event through the governing body, so you can't be under ten. You could have a children's event if you wanted to build a community event into it, uh, but typically there's a juniors race and then they race, there's five ability levels, each race is about forty-five minutes long, and it kinda, it's like a fight card, so you start with your lightweights and go to middleweights.
So you would have like?
It's like seven or eight hours of, of, uh, competition, probably seven or eight heats.
Okay, um, that answers my, is it all day question, what time would you start?
Uh, typically, we, uh, you know, it's a conversation with the parks department and you, of course, but we, we, it takes us about an hour and a half to two hours to prepare the course, you know, set up registration, and we have course closure material, or we can use this whole period, we, we actually have a barricade fencing company that we can bring out for a traffic closure, um.
That's what one of my questions was gonna be, the officers, we'd actually have to close the park all day, right?
Yeah, it's, it, for safety, these events are. Yeah, usually the route would be closed to cars, um, or it has to be closed to cars to be safe, because it's curb to curb.
It is just the Sunday, right, the Sunday the twelfth also?
No, the twelfth is a race in St. Louis County, so.
There's no, there's no pavilions that are rented, as, as it.
Now, the, there, there's a small event on the twelfth, that's why I asked, but that's just a special event, but, no, the pavilions won't be rented out, uh, per day until May first.
They're not reservable.
So what's the, May first is. What's the date of the event?
April thirteenth.
April thirteenth.
The, the bathrooms, depending on the weather, could come into play, but I guess with board approval, you could ultimately.
Yeah, they're gonna be there all day.
Yeah, as long as the weather's good.
What about food and stuff, what do you guys do, do you have food trucks come, do you barbecue?
You know, that's kind of, you know, wh- when we, when we sort of conceived the idea of putting a race on here, we have not had the conversation about scale or production, like how big you want it. I mean, generally, I think for a first-year event, we would wanna make sure that it's marketed to a, the nearby community and it's safe. Most people would bring lunch, I, I mean, if there were to be, like in other situations, these could be very big community events where you're bringing in food trucks or local businesses, and there's an audience you build. It could be friends and family, or it could be, I mean, I, I would encourage people to come out and see it, and in terms of a conversation with the municipality, usually a next step would, could very easily be, uh, talking about how this plays into marketing and tourism.
Yep, we have that great new room. It could be utilized and with the pavilions. Send Dan over to barbecue, right?
So, so I'll tell you one, one bit about, uh, I don't wanna undersell us, uh, I actually put on the final for the US Professional Championship, uh, for the country.
That's awesome.
And so, it's a bigger event, not the national championship, but the final for the pro series, and that's in St. Louis on Labor Day weekend on the hill. And so if you were to poke around a little bit of what we do, that's a much bigger deal, but it's really important to have that, to have other events.
Do you do that bike event in South, South City?
Probably.
I think it's a naked.
Oh, no, we, we typically wear pants.
I used to actually run a restaurant that it went past all the time.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, that's not our vibe.
Well, Mike's been, uh, involved in the, uh, Gateway Cup, you may have seen, uh, you know, uh, televised, uh, new cat about that. It's been held for, what, twenty years, maybe more? Yeah, so it's been, uh, he's been promoting, uh, a long time.
That's impressive.
Working with the community as much as, uh, we were just talking about it, about, uh, getting everybody involved and the right people involved, so.
Well, I said make the event what you want it to be, we can handle the rest.
Safety-wise, too, you can, the department, whatever you need, that'd be, that'd be great, officers, the whole nine yards.
You said that, you know, that there can be people that watch, um, how are we gonna get them in the park safely and everything?
Generally, it's street parking, service parking around, I mean, I think there's a couple parking spaces around the park, but it's, uh, we'd have to look at a parking plan, like what's not gonna be invasive to the neighborhood, or we would expect in a first-year event, um, really not as many people, I mean, like on a beautiful day, if it's sunny.
Right.
We could have a hundred fifty to two hundred athletes racing in groups of thirty or forty, um.
Would this be on a weekend?
Sunday, yeah, Sunday.
And we have a very good relationship with Ritter, if you do any T Meyer.
Yeah.
Hey, we'll, all that parking there and stuff, I could go right. And he would love, he would love that.
Yeah, it'd be great to have a subsequent meeting with yourself, police and fire, you know, whoever needs to be or wants to be in the room.
Be great.
Yeah, and even talk a little bit about what potential it could be.
Typically, uh, and, we, uh, had briefly talked about, uh, the court, and, uh, basically we'll be running, uh, kind of card works. Think of it that way, and, uh, obviously, the courts have to be completely closed off to, uh, normal traffic. And so there'll be, uh, points along the, the right, the route, you know, the route that, um, will close off, obviously, to neighborhood streets.
Right.
Around, you know, right, and in addition to that, uh, it's a precaution to have, uh, hay bales. Particularly, I noticed there are, uh, a few, uh, hours, if I'm not mistaken, in a couple areas, and so we'll have to make sure that, uh, hay bales out to prevent any, um, you know, damage.
So, um, they fall.
Right, so, um, I think, uh, I think the, the court, the courses, right, that's loaded, I mean, it's a beautiful course, and, uh, it's got a very nice, uh, my votes of it, and, uh, the, the cones are not extreme, very gentle, so with those, uh, you know, aspects of that course, it makes it very safe for us. So, it, it's all good points.
What's the, uh, what's the distance? One, one lap, I mean?
It's, it's probably just under a mile. Yeah, this type, this format of a race is called the criteria, which is sort of a European word, but it's, uh, that's kinda what Americans are good at.
Keep it real.
Keep it flat. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a hard surface, it's just like skinny tire race bikes.
This is awesome, yeah, the, the mayor and the board stuff always loves this stuff, and this just reminds us that when you do this and you hope that you go through this, um, we, we got one of the best street and parks and, and police department, we're all working together, this is gonna be a great event.
It's gonna be real, that's for sure. Be like a nice job.
Well, thank you for reaching out, I think you've written it to us.
All right, so we'll just, I guess, follow up with, with your office.
I was gonna say, feel free, yeah, it can be the point of contact, and then anything, um, are you guys okay with just reaching out to local businesses? So that way they can come out as well, um, that way.
Yeah, for a first-year event, my thought would be, you know, not creating a program that's necessarily revenue creating for the event, like it's just like participate and then see, like for our other events when they have bigger budgets, we do try to create like some sort of sustainable model for it. You know, we, uh, we'll need to figure out, I mean, the other thing for you is that, you know, who we indemnify, we ensure the event, we need to have additional insurance. Usually it's venue, city, property owner, ourselves.
Insurance stuff goes to them. Tim takes care of the rest, and Becca can handle the rest.
And you'll let the mayor and all the other board members know that whatever you need from our three, four departments.
Just keep us in the loop or anything.
Good, something positive, a lot of good.
I love it, thank you so much for choosing St. Anne.
We can send you some, uh, some video of stuff we've done, so if you did have, uh, an interest in creating stuff like that, you should, we can help.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. I thank you very much.
Tim, did you have anything?
Uh, I just had a few things, um. First of all, I did wanna thank, uh, all the women, Jimenez, because they, these guys have counted me in November, and she really has spirited the event, and it's appreciative, actually. We've got a Civic Plus, uh, we've started our, uh, process with them for the new, uh, point-of-sale system at the, uh, community center. It started last week, uh, it's, it's, it's gonna take a little bit of time, uh, 'cause we're kinda going out of the disco era and heading it real way antiquated, and we're kinda moving about three decades ahead in terms of, and it, it's gonna be good, and it's gonna be efficient, and. We're looking forward to it. Uh, the pool, uh, we have the concessions, uh, request for proposals out, um. Myself and Brett met with Midwest Life Bar Company, uh, last week, um, I mean, we proposed the eight P M. closing time for them. It shouldn't, uh, affect the cost very much, um, so I'm looking forward to that. We, we have, uh, started to put some pricing together for you guys to look at, probably next meeting. Uh, it's basically a comparison to several of the, of the local communities nearby, and, uh, not just the local communities, but communities with, uh, similar builders and similar aquatic centers, uh, and the golf renovations have started, uh. Thank you to Bob Bobo, I think he realized in about thirty-five seconds I wasn't gonna be much help maintenance-wise.
He's done the four eyes instead of the two, sir.
He's done a phenomenal job, uh, getting started on that, and, um, thank you for that, and things are good, so that's all.
What about that football team, did that pass?
Yeah, the St. Louis Slam, oh, Jeff, that's right, I'm sorry, uh, we got several, uh, we got a lot of, uh, comments from you guys, which I appreciated. So there is a minimal fee attached, so they will be paying us at the end for the facility. Uh, their first night of practice was last week, they loved it, so I think it's gonna be a good relationship.
And will they be using the gym?
Yeah, they, they use the gym, they, they had originally said they were gonna use the weight room and cardio, but there, there's not much usage of that at all. They basically are just gonna be used to gym six to eight weeks until they go back outside to start their season.
So we could call the St. Anne the home of the slam? Sounds good. All right, Ryan?
So, uh, first off, as far as all this goes, thank you for everyone's help and support, communicating everything on social media and whatnot, it's appreciated.
Did awesome, you did a really, really good job.
Yes.
So, last week or two weeks ago, I met with a group from an organization called Open Space S P L, and they do these big cleanups. I've actually talked to Union Scoring Dump Freak about this, so they, every year we have to participate in these trash cleanup events that we do for M S D, and all the stuff they make us do, so. But we go all over the place and do these, so sometimes we end up having to go downtown and do these, sometimes we end up having to go Jackson County Unions. So, I talked to Matt to see if we would be interested in this, nothing's for sure yet, but we did meet, uh, I did meet with them down at St. Anne Park, 'cause they always try and do these in different waterways, so whether it be a creek or a stream or whatever. So, again, we're always, every year we're going to a different location to do this, and I thought, well, if we could, they're also looking for places to do events, so I figured if we could do one here, down at St. Anne Park and Golf Course, and they have, they provide, you know, volunteers and people sign the waivers with them and t-shirts and all that stuff.
Very sexy gear.
Yeah, we, we would probably be there to help, you know, they would bring stuff up to the top of the bank, and we would maybe haul up like gators from the golf course or something to a dumpster, but other than that, they do all the cleanup and stuff like that. So I just wanted to kinda make you guys aware that we're trying to do that, they're kinda talking to some people to see if it could be a good spot for it. That's all I got.
What about the, the glass on eighty room?
So, yeah, that's all I got. I mean, that's something...
Yeah, it seems like that guy's driving by and throwing crap all the time. I called Ryan the other day. I drove down Lindbergh, and at the, right there at Lindbergh and Link, there's just, there's fifty bottles.
Correct. And they're small, they're bigger, they're the, they're not airplane bottles. They're the smallest, tiny, but what, they're like...
Shooter bottles, a little...
They're a little bit, they're a little bit...
They're the same thing, they're the same liquid, it's the same bottle, too. I mean, so...
These ones that I'm smelling are, they're, they're like the half the size of a, they're, they're like that. So, they're not, they're bigger than the airplane.
He's literally throwing them on eighty all the way down Link.
Okay, so, so, so I have, we, I should say, do they know for sure who this is?
Somebody said they did.
Ryan, didn't you say the Colonel?
Uh, no, so I talked to somebody that lives back off of Pascom County Park around there, Incorporated, that says that he knows who it is, and followed him, and this, that, and the other, and gave that information to county, and he doesn't think it went anywhere. So, I told him that...
Can somebody give that to me?
Yeah, I can tell. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, as far as cleaning it up, you know, now that it's a little bit warmer, we can take the street trooper down there and get it cleaned up this week if the snow's all melted away.
Right, I mean, obviously, we gotta clean it up, but you should have to keep cleaning it up, so we really gotta catch the guy.
Well, two, well, two things, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to stress stuff, but this is a work session. And are we recording this? I thought we went over that, so that's recording.
Yeah, we're recording it for a vote.
Okay. I just want to make sure that in a work session, there are things that I would like to say, but when it's recording, I'm not going to give anything up from our standpoint for safety issues and other things that if people watch this and they start talking about that. So, I will, I'll, I'll wait and put it in a different form on the, on Monday nights, like, for the action of the plan. But, so if you just give me that, though, because we actually did two or three things, but we'll hold off until next Monday.
I...
Cool. Uh, got anything?
The M G's been pretty quiet.
Anything coming up next month?
Not, not yet.
I have three things, too, just, but I don't want to interrupt anyone to go around or whatever. Want to make sure, Ryan, you weren't here, but there were a lot of nice compliments about the snow removal, so I want to visit that again and tell you thank you, that I know sometimes when you're in a position of leadership, that people will bitch, and I will say this, that in CNN, I would rather people be bitching about that than other things. That means that they got it good here.
Right.
And so, that's formal leadership, just also is the mayor and the board, and the police department, street and parks, we can go on, that everybody continues to like live here, you know, and cares and takes things personal. So, you definitely did a good job, and so on, and so, once again, we weren't out trying to tow cars, and we had a meeting, I want to make sure that the board, mayor, that you guys know that, and then the second round, we ended up towing after we were knocking, and that, we put that on several different sites, several. We even talked about it in the media for two different news channels, so, but I'm always here, and if you have any other suggestions, please let us know. We'll roll with it. So, I want to make sure that you knew that in front of everybody, that we know that that's a hard job, and that was a storm of the century that we haven't had in a long time. We're gonna hand out awards next Monday for three or several different things, and wanted to make sure that that will take about five to ten minutes, so that you guys have that, and then that'll be it.
Okay. Um, before we move forward, I just wanted to ask, because I forgot, how much money did we return to the sort of lateral fund?
Are you asking what we, the fund balance?
Yeah, because we're supposed to give twenty-five thousand back or something.
Oh, yeah, we, we did do that.
Okay.
So, we were pretty good positives, I guess, at the end of the year?
Yeah, it, it's, we're, we're going into two thousand twenty-five, pretty decent shape.
So, the system we've, we've got in place is working.
For now, I mean, we'll have to, you know, continue to watch it as far as the, you know, we get any, you know, all of a sudden, get a big bump of applications. Last year was a good year. Oh, I am so sorry. This was one of the most important things.
Okay.
Over the weekend, the power went out over at Heritage. That's the third time. Some of the neighbors, too, were starting to complain. That's the third time, I think, within under thirty days, so a lot of the senior citizens had nowhere to go. I asked Matt, and Matt said, yeah, that's fine. I spoke with the mayor. You guys were allowed to open up the community center for a room, and we had probably twenty, so we actually took the van, went and picked them up, ordered them food, and gave them plenty of liquids to drink, and they, and the management were ecstatic, and they were thankful. So, I want to make sure that you guys, those are the kind of things in our emergency management book that we continue to learn from, and we wrote the script for the power outage for that stuff. So, that, that is the stuff with NIMS and so on, that we get serious grant money, and it helps us. So, by you guys just doing, so you didn't have to, but once again, thank you, you guys, for doing that.
Are they gonna fix that, right?
So, it's, it's not the, they're all on electric, so their gas, everything is ran by electric, so it wasn't like there's a gas problem. And it's, it's hitting other homes, so...
And it's Amaran, so I did call the Amaran rep, and I asked her to do a study in that area, like I had her do the study in the other area that is working now. So, hopefully, they'll get some good results from that.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, going around the table. Murphy?
Nope.
Kenny?
Good.
Jenny?
Nothing.
Ivan?
No, I had no questions. Was that Kathy, Gary, that was talking just a minute ago?
Yeah, that was Chief.
Not the junior chiefy yet, sir.
That was Chief.
Didn't sound like you.
Okay, we do have a, we do have a close session tonight, but I need everybody not to leave yet, because we're gonna do a vote on the, on the tax after I close this meeting. All right, so I need a motion to close this meeting? Ladies, getting closed? Called a winner of the special meeting? Roco?
Everybody except for Michelle and Ainen, Ainen will not be able to vote, because he's on the...
We'll come pick you up, Ainen.
Got your jamies on?
Hey, how'd you get us that?
All right, at this, at this time, I'd like to hear any public comments on this agenda. Would anyone in the audience like to come up and yell at us about the tax or anything?
I can speak as a resident, correct?
I can speak as a resident.
One oh six oh seven, St. Francis Lane. As the air in Jimenez is a resident, not just as the chief of police, my spouse does a lot of online. What you said, Rebecca, was amazing to hear as a father. That is awesome. I'm not one to speak for taxes. Back in two thousand seventeen, we, where we had to put a tax on to save the police, it passed by sixty-one percent. I understand, Jenny, that you said that to residents, and I appreciate that, part of why you got elected. And I will just say, as a resident, that this is important to keep our community going, and, and I would really appreciate that you guys put this on the ballot. I will go out, it might cost me some votes. I've lived here for fifty years. I don't plan on leaving anywhere, but I know that this is important enough to me to continue to keep good people here safe from a law enforcement standard, and also making the good, right decision as those people who have elected me to do that. And so, once again, we have a great city attorney's office. There's all these things from all these departments that hopefully that we can continue to work together, and if we get this, and it does bring in some kind of revenue, that we can then make good, good decisions like we normally are. For this town to sit here and some of them to complain about the small things such as snow route removal and stuff like that, you are doing something right, and so are we. We continue to work hard, come out in our off time, eleven o'clock at night, three o'clock in the morning, to help people. So, I stand by this as your, as, as a resident friend, and also as an elected chief. This is important, and hopefully, we can get this passed, and thank you, Felicity.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak now? Okay, here we go. Introduction of bills. First reading of bill number thirty-four eighty-three. An ordinance authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the city of Saint Anne, Missouri, for the general municipal election to be held in the city on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five, to consider the imposition of a local use tax on purchases from out-of-state vendors at the same rate as the local sales tax. Second reading of bill number thirty-four eighty-three. An ordinance authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the city of Saint Anne, Missouri, for the general municipal election to be held in the city on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five, to consider the imposition of a local use tax on purchases from out-of-state vendors at the same rate as the local sales tax. At least, we know what's going on. No questions further? Okay. And I need a motion for a first and a second, please. Matt Roco?
Murphy? Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Cronie?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
I?
Kathy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Bill number thirty-four eighty-three becomes ordinance number, Chris?
Three three eight eight.
Three three eight eight. Okay. And we're going into a German. Can I have a first and a second?
No.
Ryan, wait, wait. Yeah, we're gonna go into closer. A question and a second for a close session?
For personal.
It's for personal.
For personal, okay. Roco?
Dan? Yes.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now a first and a second for a German.
First, so, second.
On favor? Opus, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming on tonight.